Good afternoon and welcome to our city council's work session for December 1st of 2020. Before we call the meeting to order and begin, would you join me in a word of prayer? Thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Nacogdoches and to remember that we are stewards of their trust. Help us to listen with understanding, to act with character, and in our deliberations when making decisions that affect Nacogdoches now and for many years to come. Amen.
Amen.
I'll now call our meeting to order for December 1st of 2020. And our first item is our work session and we are going to receive a report. Hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the proposed compensation plan. And Stephen Pearl, take it away.
Hello, hello, Mayor Council, Stephen Pearl, Human Resources Director. And I'm going to start this off and then we're going to switch gears and go to Matt, who's joining us virtually. Matt Weatherly with PSPC Consulting. And then Pam Kerbo is also going to help out in the presentation on some, talk about some funding. And so we're excited to discuss the salary survey and the compensation plan that we've been working on for quite a while now, since March. I actually asked Matthew today if this is the longest one he's ever worked on, so it's not, so we're good. And I believe we've put together something, the start of something that's going to be great, great for all city employees here. So just on the past discussions on pay, we all know that employees are the city's most important asset. And it's essential that the city provides fair and competitive pay. When compensation is competitive and in line with the prevailing market, the city's better equipped to attract and retain and recruit qualified personnel. Especially if you want to recruit and retain experience and talent. And today, that's more important than ever, just kind of what we're seeing with our applicant pools and hiring struggles in some departments and things like that. And as you all may recall, the previous city manager at the end of his tenure discussed with council that the city would look to conduct a salary survey to look at addressing pay in the city and for our positions. So I want to talk a little bit about the current pay system to kind of get an understanding of that before we dive into a new proposed way of doing things. So the city does not have formal, a formal pay plan that expresses minimum and maximum values. We have a hourly rate and the hourly rate is the hourly rate and it's the same hourly rate for everybody in that position. So if you've been an officer for one year and your pay is $30 an hour, or if you've been an officer for 30 years, your hourly rate's $30 an hour. So it's, it's the same hourly rate. There's no upward mobility within the positions based on performance. However, we do have a little bit of a, what we call a step and longevity pay schedule. It's a additional monthly pay amount. Exactly how the city came up with the, the step pay and why it was done exactly the way it's done, I do not know. But basically what it is, it's a, it's a pay schedule of 10 years. So starting year two, the employee starts receiving step pay. And that goes for 10 years for a total of $6,720 in addition to their hourly rate. It's a monthly pay amount that they receive on top of their hourly rate. And, and that's for every full-time employee. And, and the other part of that is longevity pay. So a little bit about longevity pay, that is a requirement of the local government code for police and fire. And so my, my thought on that is when it was implemented or required by the local government code for police and fire, they went ahead and did it for all full-time employees as additional benefit for them. That is, it's a very small amount, actually. It starts after year one and goes to year 25 and it tops out at $1,236 a year. So, and we'll discuss a little bit later, but the goal of the new pay plan going forward is to take that step pay amount and that's going to be wrapped into, into the pay ranges, into the employee's hourly rate and not a separate item anymore. We are looking to leave longevity pay separate because it is a requirement for police and fire and then just leave it as the additional benefit for other full-time employees as well. All right, and then contracting with a public sector personnel consultant. So after the first of the year, staff decided to use a consultant to conduct a salary survey to help the city come up with a, with a compensation plan. And I mean, you know, I guess in the past, 2016 was the last time the city, we did an in-house one. And it, it just kind of, when you have a consultant come in, it takes out any possible perceived bias that we may have doing it in-house. And so they look at it and they, based on their experience, put together the plans and the ideas and here's the best practices and send that to us. So from our recommendations, or sorry, from recommendations and after reference checks, the city chose public sector personnel consultants, PSPC, for the project. And they're actually out of Arizona, but they've done a number of salary surveys, compensation plans, things like that for cities all across Texas. And like I said, they, I had a listserv email that I saw from another city that they sent me and came with high recommendations. So they were chosen for the project. And Matt Weatherly, like I said, he is, he is virtually with us at the meeting and he will be speaking on the project methodology here shortly. Goals of the project, the goals actually grew and increased after the onset of this project and talking with PSPC and kind of understanding what's the common practices and best practices of coming up with pay plans and how cities put those together and use those. And so the goals are going to include, number one is just making sure we're paying our positions at a proper pay rate and just being competitive. Also formalizing a pay range for each position, so having a minimum and maximum value to a position. And there's a lot that comes with that. I know when we get salary survey requests from other cities and they ask, what are your police officers, what's the range or for any position? I'd say it's, it's an hourly rate and they're like, what is that? What does that mean? And so I think it's going to be a great thing for us to have some kind of range. And then also having a way to increase pay based on performance, to grow within that, within that range for, for each position. And then having some flexibility in pay when hiring experienced, experienced employees. I think one of the big problems we run into is that we post the hourly rate, whether it's for labor or whatever, $10 an hour is what we pay. Somebody sees that and take it or leave it. I mean, that, that's kind of, kind of the system that we have now and that's definitely not the best way to do that. And then the, the biggest challenge of the whole process was slotting employees within the created ranges while being able to afford it now and then also being able to afford it going forward in the future. We don't want to implement something now that we're not able to fund or afford going forward. So that was another big goal is to make sure that we have something we can afford. And with that, I will hand it over to Matt Weatherly and he's going to talk about project scope and methodology. And then we will come back with some more information.
Thank you, Stephen. Is everybody able to hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I appreciate everybody's time, appreciate the opportunity to join you kind of over this, you know, forum and format, kind of the new normal for us this year. We're used to 50 or 60 airplanes a year. We do have staff in Dallas, we've got staff in Los Angeles, here in Arizona, as well as up in Midwest, up in Chicago. So our experience, our travel, I think just qualify us to ask good questions. So hopefully we're able to add, you know, some value to the conversation. Certainly it's, it's been a pleasure working with your staff, you know, this year, kind of working towards and developing something that is maybe bigger than just kind of what we'll talk about today, but sets a plan in place as well as a process in place for kind of the ongoing maintenance and really intentional, you know, distribution of salaries, if you will, based on market, based on eventually performance. If that's kind of one of your goals. Our scope included the conduct of a salary survey, so we'll talk about and provide some examples of what that looked like. Creating that pay plan, looking at pay ranges for all jobs and working towards an implementation plan. So I'll get probably a good, you know, 10 or 11 slides in and then we'll, you know, certainly allow any time for questions and turn it over to staff so that they can talk a little bit about some of the leaping off points as far as the direction that they'll need, as well as the plan that's being proposed, as well as those ranges for each job. So if you want to go to the next slide, Stephen, what we're working on, really kind of at a high level, you know, typically cities do this. I would say every five to seven years is pretty common. You conduct a survey, whether it's to review your job descriptions, review your market position, really being intentional with your salaries and benefits or kind of your, your pay offerings in this particular case, that either validates what you've been doing or, you know, creates kind of some options so that you as decision makers can utilize the data for the purposes of planning. Typically, you know, most cities that we work with, and we probably do 50, 55 studies a year. If it's been a while, you know, since a study has been done, we look at, you know, hey, what have you been doing recently? Whether it's cost of living adjustments, merit increases, step increases, where are you now compared to markets? We want to certainly answer that question as well as, you know, host kind of a conversation or facilitate a conversation around where do we want to be in order to recruit and in order to retain. The majority of cities also take, you know, maybe a couple of years to really settle in, right? To say, okay, we had a study done, we've got results. You end up with maybe the ability to only pull so many levers when it comes to implementation, really just kind of built around, you know, cost. And frankly, if we, if we broke our system over multiple years, we might not be able to fix it, you know, all in one year as well. So kind of working towards an implementation plan. But really in a high level globally, we want to make sure, you know, we're, we're matching up a philosophy with a plan, with a program, with policies and procedures, as well as providing just flat-out objective data that helps inform, you know, the development of a compensation plan. My next couple of slides, you know, before I define some things, there's, there's just kind of a few thoughts. And kind of Stephen alluded to them a little bit, but just some trends that we've seen. Certainly, you know, the, the world has changed in the last six months or eight months of doing this. But, you know, everywhere that we go and certainly, you know, across Texas, we see a high demand for anything related to growth, construction. So if you've got a CDL, if you're a mechanic, you're an equipment operator, you're an engineer, maybe you're a surveyor. And then obviously public safety on a national level, everywhere that we've gone, frankly, for the last maybe 10 years, we've heard just kind of an arms race, if you will, of attempting to recruit and retain, you know, certified and qualified law enforcement. So lots of trends there. We wanted to bring some data that would give us insight on kind of a local as well as a regional basis. So I'll flash that, maybe just a couple of slides, but a couple of key terms, I think, before I get too far down the road. I've probably already said a few words that warrant some definitions, but I've got two slides here if you want to go. Classification, you know, it's really just kind of a, a job, a job description. There are about 130 different job descriptions that cover your 300 or so full-time employees right now. We wanted to survey as many of those as possible within our scope of work to gain some insight into the market value of those positions. Maybe grammatically, compensation can be applied to both the value of that job description as well as how we choose to treat a person or what we pay a person for those job duties that they're performing on those job descriptions or in that job classification. This, this third bullet on this slide anyway is a critical one because what we're going to attempt to do is put you back to a formal set of pay ranges. A pay table that has a formal minimum and a maximum that really sets some goalposts. You know, like it or not, we all have a finite value, so to be able to say, hey, don't pay less than, don't pay more than. We want to see some goalposts put up that enable us to then articulate the value of employees within a pay range. Talk about maybe a hiring range or a hiring value within that minimum to maximum. Articulate the value of a full competent journey level performer within that pay range. So we'll talk about that as we get into the proposed pay plan a little bit as well. My other two key terms on the next slide really kind of set in motion a conversation that's sometimes a challenge just to land on. So in working with your staff, identifying where you get people from, where you lose people to, but really trying to fill up two lists. Who do we compare with, which is maybe better defined as who is like us or who has jobs like us? And maybe in the weeds, what factors make a city like another city? You know, I know two are certainly alike and we're only trying to compare jobs, but certainly you can identify based on demographics, based on population, based on budget, based on, you know, geography, some comparators, agencies that are a little bit like us. And then competitors, which is a really fun, kind of frustrating fact-based discussion around if we lose people, where are they going? You know, like it or not, they're a competitor. They might be massive compared to us or they might be wealthy compared to us or that kind of thing. Like it or not, they're a competitor, right? It doesn't mean that they set our policy and it doesn't mean that we have to pay just like them. But in awareness and maybe for face validity, ensuring that we've got their data and we're aware of what they offer. So that if they're the bully that's taking all of our people or we train people and then they go to the city next door. And frankly, that's a struggle in either end of the extreme. You know, I would say a third of our annual revenue is Texas. And that's made up of Dallas metroplex, a little bit of Austin area, Austin Hill countries and Houston and south of Houston. And the remainder I would call are non-metraplex or non-metropolitan areas. The challenge in defining a list of competitors and comparators is, is no greater or no less. If I'm in the middle of Dallas with 55 cities to pick from, or if I'm in Abilene or I'm a San Angelo or I'm maybe a Midland or an Odessa, I might be the big one in the neighborhood. Or I might be one of several along a string separated by 40 miles and a freeway. Yeah, nevertheless, kind of filling up that list of where do we go to get data? And how does that help inform our decisions can sometimes be a challenging one. So we worked with your staff a little bit. If you want to go to the next slide, we landed on a list of agencies that really are kind of a reflection of those two elements, right? Competitors and comparators. Who has jobs like ours, who maybe is a local or a regional competitor that either tends to take our people or maybe we even, we were able to source people from. The challenge, I think, in any organization, frankly, less than 1,000 employees is really trying to compare jobs because those smaller organizations, and you're a, you're a kind of a perfect size, small to medium-sized client for us, is that some of your people wear multiple hats, right? There's not such thing as just get in the box and I only do one job duty and we got eight people that do one job duty. It's usually the opposite of one person that's doing eight different job duties. So the challenge is trying to compare jobs, make a reasonable enough comparison that to say, hey, these agencies have a job like ours. Here's what they call it, here's what they pay it. But we're building basically a database from scratch and that's what we've been working on, you know, since March. Pulling up job descriptions, pulling out organization charts, budget documents, salary structures, pay plans, and making a polite nuisance of ourselves among these other agencies to collect data, right? So we start to build a database to answer our two key questions. How do we look compared to others? And are we able to take advantage of that data for plan development? Where do we want to be in the middle of this market or this market mix of data? So the next several slides, I've got just some examples. Some of them will be a little bit, you know, harder to see, but kind of just size-wise, data-wise, examples of what we'll call benchmark jobs, benchmark job classifications. These are occupations that are common enough and we're able to find like jobs in those list of comparators and competitors to start pulling data, pulling job descriptions, making comparisons. All of these agencies have formal pay ranges. So you'll notice on the right-hand side of the worksheet, minimums and maximums. And that's the representative pay range that's offered for the matching job that goes with, in this example, your office assistant three. Okay, so in the upper band there, we have office assistant three. Your average actual salaries are about $34,000 for that job. Compared to market, the average is about 33 to 43. So in this example, in the next couple of examples, we've got average market data at entry and at top. We have it for both the public sector as well as down below the private sector. A couple of things, you know, jump out a little bit. When I look at your average actual up against the average entry, your average actual salary is just above that average entry rate. You don't have a formal pay range top out, but you're going to. So going forward, I'll be able to place your pay ranges for like jobs into the mix of this data. And then we can really start to sort it and see it by minimum, see it by maximum. You'll notice some agencies have pay ranges that are a little bit wider than others and certainly some that are a little bit higher, you know, than others. For this like job, office assistant three, you can kind of track down, you know, the low entry is actually Tyler. So bigger doesn't always mean four. But the, the low starting rate for this particular job match, we're going to call it an administrative assistant in Tyler. But the duties match up well, all the way up to a Duncanville that's paying the most at entry of almost $42,000 for a like job instead of like job descriptions. On the other end of that extreme, you've got top out values. So pay range maximum values where we're going to start to take advantage at least of the data that we can get and put up goalposts. So that when we're done, we can say, okay, hey, what's the going rate? So all the way down at the bottom, again, kind of small font, but a prevailing rate. Ideally, we're going to pay our office assistant threes somewhere between 33 and $43,000 a year, right? So 17 to maybe $21 an hour, somewhere in there. That's the going rate for a person that's fully performing, all of the job duties of your office assistant three. So you're in the mix, there's a few that pay less than you currently. There's certainly more, there's a few that pay more than you at entry, but they also have a formal pay range. Sidebar, what's interesting, I think, about 2021 is what is or isn't occurring for everybody's wage adjustments. Some of these agencies have step plans where they're going to move people based on steps. Some might offer a merit program where I could get 1%, 2%, 3% merit increase if I'm performing well. But I'm going to travel within that pay band. Now, the pay bands themselves can move as well based on market, based on across-the-board adjustments, COLAs, that kind of thing. So we'll talk about that in future years and we'll stick around at no cost to help your staff kind of navigate the now what, right? If we adopt a plan for 2021, do we need to do anything to the plan in 2022? What do we do for salaries versus the pay table? Those types of discussions will kind of be ongoing and part of the support that we offer to your staff. But yeah, we can certainly flip through some of these other examples, other jobs that we're able to find some market data for. Accounting clerk, equipment mechanic, right? You can kind of see the, the pattern holds where we're pulling out minimum and maximum data. We're comparing that to market. I'll, I'll go back to that, maybe both of these two examples, the equipment mechanic as well as the equipment operator. Two jobs that really kind of, when our phone rang in March, you know, were expressed as, man, these are jobs that we have a hard time filling. Now, we do work every year in Colleen and Waco and certainly across, you know, major metropolitan areas. But what's been interesting is to kind of track, you know, as roads grow, as the state hires people or the state hires contractors, suddenly all of your CDLs at the local level, the people that have CDLs disappear, right? We were paying them 13 to maybe $18 an hour and the state snatches them up or their contractors pay them $20 an hour, $21 an hour or something like that. So these positions and those related, so equipment operators, mechanics, crew leaders, those types of positions move a little bit faster in the market, at least currently in your market, than other jobs. And we hear about them everywhere that we go, but this is an example of a job where you were a little bit low compared to market, right? So your average actual here is just under 32. Market average, if I include both public and private sector data, closer to 35. So we're a good dollar an hour short of at least the average entry rate for equipment operators out there in the market. So no huge surprise because there are only so many people that have a CDL. And, you know, depending on the year, they might jump around for a dollar or $2 an hour. Now, depending on the contraction that we see and depending on how quick the thaw or freeze is kind of post-COVID, I'll be curious to see who migrates and stays in the public sector, maybe for the perception of stability and benefits versus chases that other dollar, $2, $3, $4 an hour, you know, base pay that they might be able to get out of the private sector. So it's always a balance, right? So I don't want you to overreact or underreact to the data, but just know that we have a ton of data sitting back behind what went into the development of this proposed salary plan. I think just a couple of other examples that we have of the market data. Can't remember what, what other ones we've got. I think we have, let's see, did we get through all of them? I think we got through all of them. Questions on anything that I've said so far, questions on anything that we saw on the slides that you want me to spend a little bit more time on? Before I turn it back over to staff briefly to talk about kind of the now what part and how we're going to apply that. Any questions?
Okay, Mr. Golden?
Yes, thank you. One of the things, when you talk about comparing different location cities, what variables are you using? Because doing some research, I guess my question is, what would be at the end of the month, if I was working as a mechanic here and I picked up everything and just moved to another city with higher pay that you have on your list, say Longview, Tyler? What would be my net funds at the end of the month? Because looking at comparisons like health-wise for Nacogdoches, Nacogdoches County is much larger than the ones that's comparing the Longview Tylers and also, but it's less costly for groceries and housing. So that makes a big difference. If I picked up everything and for what I have here, home, buying groceries, healthcare, it would cost me more to move for that rate of pay, in my opinion.
Yep, yeah, and I think that's always the challenge. I think even some of these cities are in and out of social security. So that would certainly impact your take-home. And then I think, you know, health insurance contributions, maybe for myself, my family, my dependents. You know, those are, those are the, tend to be the big-ticket items, you know, that are going to slide around a little bit. Certainly cost of housing, I think, cost of groceries, overall cost of living. If I get too far afield, you know, is going to vary quite widely. And I think that, you know, those larger cities like a Tyler, like a Longview, they might have a few more vacant positions that they want to fill. You know, the cost of living, I think the last I saw was reasonably comparable to yours. There are certainly pockets that are a little bit higher and a little bit lower. The only adjustments thus far that we made to the raw data was when we went up against a larger city for those positions that I would deem to be size-sensitive. So if I'm a manager, if I'm a director, if I'm a department head, yeah, and I'm in Tyler or Longview, I might have 35 or 60 people reporting to me instead of five or 10 people reporting to me, that kind of thing. So that was the only sensitivity thus far, as far as making adjustments or significant adjustments to the raw data. But I think the very practical answer to your question is there are going to be some several factors that would influence your take-home, you know, from each of these cities or city to city to city. And it could be social security in or out, pension contributions in or out, health insurance contributions in or out, absolutely.
That's the only part I have about comparison.
Okay, well, I have a follow-up for that. With your, the regional private sector examples, did you use your own research or did you use published averages? And can you give us a couple of examples?
Yeah, so we subscribe to something called Economic Research Institute. It is a commercial published salary survey dominated by the private sector and it gives us insight to just under 1,000 different regions. And so we could go in and look, and I don't, I don't, I haven't pulled it, but I could go in and look at the top 100 participating private companies in your region. Now, that region, you know, is, you know, a decent-sized region, but it's not dominated, for example, by Dallas, right? So I'm getting very, very regional and specific to get insight because individual corporations don't necessarily want to share data with us. But when I look at, you know, kind of what's in that mix, it's going to include, you know, large regional employers, you know, in your area. Now, in this particular case, the data cut is kind of a, like a Tyler Longview data cut. But, you know, picture drawing a circle of about 50 miles in every direction from Tyler Longview. That's where the data is coming from. And the data that is available is certainly for office and clerical, labor and trades. Some of your professional and technical positions like maybe IT, finance, accounting, HR, to a lesser degree, planning. Some of those positions exist in both the public and the private sector. So it's not for every job, you know, certainly, but wherever we could find really good reliable sample sizes for like jobs. There are certainly a lot of positions in those job groups that I mentioned that have a pretty good portability between the public sector and the private sector. What's interesting is that the entry pay tracks a little bit closer than the top out pay. So the average top out in the private sector that was reported is a little bit lower. So the average top out in the private sector that was reported is a little bit lower. Right? And we kind of tend to use about the twenty-fifth and seventy-fifth percentile of that data. But the range width from the private sector appears to be a little bit narrower and that brings down that average top out. Compared to what we're seeing in the public sector. Some of the public agencies, some of these cities have a pay band that's, you know, forty-five to fifty-five percent wide. And certainly that, you know, might bring down their entry, but push up their top. You know, what we want to try and do, especially with the, the plan that we're going to propose, is really kind of find our sweet spot. Say, don't pay less than, but there is a cap, right? So it doesn't get away from us and then we can try and over time, try to pay people right in the middle of that pay range is really ideal to say. Fully performing, maybe I hit it at five years, seven years, ten years, but I don't want to be in the middle, you know, of my pay range if possible. But the private sector data, in this particular case, we weighted it kind of fifty-fifty average. And so we've got, you know, these twelve or fourteen public agencies bounced up against, quite frankly, hundreds, you know, of private corporation data points. And then we're equally weighting that data.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Anderson?
I guess my question is somewhat similar to Mr. Bolden's. The numbers that you have, have come up with as, as examples, are those? Are those including, are those total compensation numbers? Are those factoring in benefits, things like that, or are those just base salary?
They are just base.
Okay.
Yeah, they are just base as far as our scope goes. It's not uncommon, you know, to throw in the bucket, you know, pension, health insurance, maybe cert pay, ad pay. I think Stephen kind of mentioned some of those things that are extras right now that the city intends to roll in. You know, and make sure they are being counted towards a base pay, you know, rate. But our scope, you know, is, and what your, your numbers that you're seeing here are base pay numbers.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, did you have any questions?
No, mayor, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead, Mr. Weatherly.
Yeah, I think we're at a spot. I'll, I'll tap finance on the shoulder, I'll, I'll tap staff on the shoulder a little bit if they want to kind of take over from here. I'm guessing that you probably either saw some sort of packet, you know, with some options and some proposed pay ranges. So I'll, I'll defer to staff here for a minute and then certainly help answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, so I guess the, the next step, and like Matt said, this is, this is step one. There is a lot more involved to this and to, to be thought about and worked through and developed and processes and procedures. That is, is going to follow this, but this is step one in that is developing the pay plan and then building those other things off of that. And so what did we do ultimately with all this information that was collected? You know, the salary data, Matt also sent us some example pay plans and, and grade charts and, and things like that that we could work with. And, and so after many, many, many drafts, I don't, probably sixty-seven it seemed like. We created a pay plan with grades and ranges for our positions. And I did send that out on the AIS and actually we could pull that up on the screen if y'all wanted to take a look at that. Just to kind of see where we slotted the different positions within the, the grades. And while he's pulling that up, I also want to walk through like the, the key major items of this pay plan that we're presenting. And then those are the ones Pam's going to come up here and kind of talk about the, the financial impact of those different things, so. All right, it looks like I got about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven key things here. And so one of the big things with this, this pay plan and the implementation is, is first off, I, I believe the city was looking to first implement this. Somewhere around April. And so we're trying to do this a quarter, a quarter ahead, a quarter early, quarter ahead of schedule. And it's just, we just noticed that we need to do something with our pay. It's, it's a weird time right now and with labor pools and, and, and hiring and recruitment. And, and we see, we see the issues with police and like Matt talked about with our equipment operators and things like that. And sanitation and streets and then, and PD, of course, and even fires. App, applicant pool is, is not as great as it used to be. It's, it's, the dynamics are changing there. So we did to make sure that we are being competitive and providing those competitive rates. The other part is, is that we, what we did is we looked at the, the city's minimum hourly re, wage that we provide for jobs. And we decided to go ahead and set that at a minimum of twelve seventy an hour. And that is a little bit of a big deal because we did have a number, not a lot, but a number of positions that some were making seven ninety-two an hour. Nine dollars an hour, ten dollars an hour. And we just wanted to bring up that minimum hourly wa, wage to just kind of have a starting point to really recruit and fill those gaps. Those employees are kind of filling the gaps, working weekends, after hours. Filling in on special projects and things like that. And those are also positions that we may be able to recruit. Higher quality applicants, not saying that the ones that we have are not high quality, but, and then also maybe they could be part of a succession plan is. We, we get some talent here, we see what they're capable of doing, they're joining our organization because of this little higher rate. And we're putting them to work, they're not just putting stamps on envelopes, we're actually have, assigning them projects and meaningful work. And then they may be used to fill these positions, whether it's grant positions or purchasing positions, things like that. So help us out there is the goal. Each employee throughout the city in this whole plan and slotting them is going to receive at least a minimum overall. And pay, additional pay adjustment increase of five hundred dollars. And so we looked at doing a thousand dollars and we didn't have the funding for that, so we dropped it down to five hundred. Ultimately, we slotted employees into a pay rate within that range. That put them at a hourly rate higher than what they're currently making when you combine their step and their hourly rate now. And so on, and sometimes when we did that, employees ended up making seventy bucks. And so we said, well, let's give them something meaningful in this. And we had had discussions on this in the past and that's why we kind of landed, landed on that five hundred dollars. There are some employees that, like the equipment operators, were below that minimum. And so they're going to see a much more significant bump, most of them, when, when they transition into the new pay plan. The slotting of entry level police and fire. So that we did do a little different for the slotting of the, so a police officer or firefighter, the, the first level in those ranks. And this was mainly done kind of a stair step thing based on their number of years. We took their years of, of experience into consideration. And we did this because we wanted to help kind of combat some compression, compression issues that we're probably going to have right off the bat. See, another thing is, is, is looking to, when we're going to hire somebody with previous experience, whether it's from another city or outside agency with law enforcement experience. It gives us a tool to say, okay, you don't have to start at the bottom, you can come within the range. But if we have slotted officers, you know, to go forward, the current ones we have in the, the very bottom of our range. And then we bring in a new officer. And we, we don't want them to be making more than our current officers that have been with the city and have the experience with the city. So we did some stair stepping and moved them up in their pay ranges based on years of service. Entry level officer position salary range minimums were set at twenty-one hundred above minimum average to help with recruitment due to, due to the hiring. Sorry, due to current hiring struggles in the PD. PD's still down, I believe, over ten employees. And so I, I know that was one of the, I've heard it from staff and council about what can we do to help with the recruitment and get recruitment and getting the PD brought up to full staffing? And that's, that's been an issue since I've been here, I think maybe for one or two days. They were actually full staffed in the last six, seven years. And so, and we've never been down as much as we are now, at least since I've been here. So it's something we really need to pay attention to and address. And we're not just looking at salary, we have a recruitment plan that I've been working with their recruitment officers. Go out and do marketing, additional advertisement, things like that to help draw in qualified candidates. And then hopefully this will continue to be something our employees will, will be grateful for and help retain current employees as well. And then a big thing we did want to point out, and this has been communicated, is that the step pay side of this would roll into that hourly rate. They're not going to lose any additional money. Like I said, the hour, their current hourly rate plus the step pay and then five, at least five hundred dollars on top of that. But the only difference is, is that, you know, instead of just receiving additional pay for showing up to work, it's going to go. The plan is to go to a merit performance based system where you have to perform to be able to move through your range. And so that kind of highlights the, the key points on that. If you have any questions on any of those or need more clarity, I'll be happy to do my best to answer those. And Pam is going to come up and kind of talk about the, the funding for each, each one of these different things that we mentioned here, so.
Mr. Anderson, did you have a question on this section?
No, I sure don't.
Okay, Ms. Fisher? Did you have a question on anything that Stephen just went over?
Yes, I'm a couple, just a couple, thank you. The minimum five hundred dollar overall increase, that's across the board for every single city staff person, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, I'm assuming, annual salary?
So that's going to include TMRS, payroll taxes, so that's the budget impact. So ultimately in their pocket, it would not be five hundred dollars take home.
Okay, okay. And then my other question is, last question is sort of, at least for this section, is sort of a, a broader one. I understand the data and the methodology and the presentation of the numbers. My question to you is how you guys used that data to come up? To come up with this plan, like was there some concerted, okay, well, we want to be in between X and Y for this city, but not this city? Or was it, okay, we're going to bring every single staff person at least starting at a minimum at what base? I guess my question involves, what key decisions did you make or did you land on to come up with this proposed plan?
No, excellent question and, and it was kind of a combination of all of that. So using the market data as a guide, that gives us one starting point there. Funding, what, what the, the budget could afford at this time. And like I said, this is the start of this, so there's, there's actually still ongoing discussions with directors on maybe reclassifying a position. Maybe they need to go do a different grade based on actually what they're, what they're doing within their job. Maybe their job description needs to be updated. Some of it also was just the, like we have labor, equipment operator one, equipment operator two. So we had to make sure that the, the labor was below the equipment operator one, so a progression through the, through the grades for the different positions. And then we had discussions with the, the directors. And like I said, those are still ongoing on certain positions, so it, it's not set in stone yet and it's not done. This is just kind of step one of this. But some of those were, hey, this person's really doing this and here's what their job entails and it's more similar to this position. And so they were maybe bumped one or bumped down. And so it's just a kind of an ongoing discussion to make sure that we're, we're providing that fair pay within our organization. And so it, it really was a combination of, of a number of things on that. And, and I believe this is going to be an ongoing conversation for the life of the pay plan. They may, employees may be responsible or given more duties, more tasks, so reclassifications may be necessary. And then also just looking to see where market data is. I mean, like I think Matt was saying is that the, the equipment operators are jumping around pretty quick right now. And so if, if we see that we're having a hard time with those, maybe that needs to be something we need to reclassify and plug in to a, a different grade. So there's, it's, it's not exact, but it was just a combination of, of many things and trying to plug them in where, where they best fit and get us a good start. And, and then need to reevaluate and look at it, that's something we can certainly do.
Okay, thank you, quick follow up. Then based on all of these sort of soft factors to, to, to get to where you are with this proposed plan. Does every single staff person's salary range now? All within, instead of outside, our competitors and comparators?
Well, I think, I think to answer that question. It's actually, you know, the, so we're plugging these positions into a grade. So the, the market data is not going to line up perfect for the grades that you assign to make these classifications, these families. Because you'd have a, a grade for each job then ultimately what you would do. So it's not going to line up perfect. And I would think the, the main point, the main takeaway on that is that all, all the positions were assigned to a grade that's consistent with market data. And how they function within our organization. And so is it, is it going to be perfect? Is it going to line up perfect? May some of them be below, may some of them be on top? Yes, very well, but those are things we're going to continually mon, continual, continually monitor. And if we need to move it one way or the other, we definitely can. And I think that's the best part of this pay plan is, is having that flexibility within those grades to move it when necessary, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bolden?
Yes, this one. On your minimum wage, twelve seventy an hour, how did you come up with that figure?
Well, I, I think what we looked at is most of our, I think that ended up being the minimum wage for our full-time employees.
It was.
And so what we did is we just decided, hey, let's, let's make that the minimum even for our part timers. Some of our part timers had similar type of positions, I believe, but were being paid less. And so we just said, hey, this is going to be the minimum where it ended up for our full-time employees. Let's just move them up and work towards that being the minimum for everybody. And that may be something that we could look to adjust going forward to bring that wage up.
Well, that, no, that explained it because it didn't look like that was just for part-time employees, so.
Yeah, no, if you look at the, I don't know if it's still up there.
I'm looking at the pay plan implementation.
So you'll see.
The general fund?
So you'll see the, on that pay plan. So that would be grade twelve on ours. And so that whole bottom half is, says part-time, 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 part-time. And so ultimately that was the group that got moved up into this grade. They were below, and so we said, let's put them. Now, they're not going to receive all the same benefits as, as the full-time employees because they don't get TMRS and health insurance and, and those things.
So really, that did not show any increase, basic pay for full-time employees?
For full-time employees?
I mean, from twelve seventy is already the starting salary for full-time.
Well, there was a couple.
I can, I can help you real quick. We actually had a couple of full-time positions that I can't, I think they came in at like twelve oh seven or twelve oh four. One was a circulation clerk at the library and I don't remember the other one. Kettle attendant. We only had a handful that came in under that twelve seventy and we had a lot, as you'll see, come in at that twelve seventy. Office assistant ones, our labors. And so we didn't want to have two full-time positions at that grade and so we, we moved them to the twelve seventy. And then we talked a little bit more about the part-time and that's how the twelve seventy came about. We had a big chunk that came in at twelve seventy and then just a handful of outliers that were right under it. And so that, to us, to have a, a minimum wage, we felt like that was a, a good place to start.
Okay, thank you. And one, one other thing now. The basic, no matter what the job responsibility is, is the same starting pay?
Well, it, I'm not sure I understand your question.
There's, the starting pay is twelve seventy, correct?
Twelve seventy, yeah.
And that's no matter what job responsibility you hired for?
Yeah, well, in that grade, in that.
In that grade, yeah.
In that grade, and so, I mean, and that's.
I mean, counting the experience and et cetera.
Well, and, and so that's something we got to still develop going forward.
Okay.
No, all these employees in this position, there's, besides the ones that may, were making seven dollars, nine dollars, a lot less. They're probably going to the twelve dollar and seventy an hour range. But a lot of these employees are, you know, they're going to fall into a range based on their experience. When you roll that step pay in, it may be towards the middle, the midpoint of this, or even maybe towards the maximum of this. So no, when, when everybody falls into this plan, it's not everybody starting at twelve dollars and seventy cents an hour. And then also going forward, that's one of the things we got to look at is the flexibility on how we're going to advertise pay rates. Are we going to advertise that as a range or as a starting rate? What exactly we're going to do there? But, you know, kind of the goal is if, if we can hire a, let's see, who's in a laborer that's been a laborer at, at another city doing very similar work for five or ten years. And they want to come here for thirteen seventy instead of twelve seventy. I mean, that gets. I mean, that gives us some flexibility to hire that person, instead of before, we're, we're taking it or leaving.
We don't have that, okay, and that, and that was my point, whether a person can come in with education or experience, he shouldn't have to start at the twelve seventy.
Correct, yeah. And, and, and that's one of, and, and, you know, we talked about the compression issues a little bit and, and trying to avoid that. So somebody currently in the city with more experience, we wouldn't hire someone new with less experience on top of them. So those are some of the things we gotta look to address going forward, but yes.
Thank you.
So you keep talking about how this is the very beginning, and we've got to address this, and we still have to look at that. But I was under the impression you wanted this to start.
Right.
So you want to start it without having all of this other stuff in place?
Well, it's, it's, it's kind of plugging everybody in, step one, getting them in there. And then I think the, from my understanding, and Mario may talk about this a little bit more, but the first year is kind of gonna be a little bit of a grace period for the employees. And then we're gonna be bringing in contract staff to talk about performance evaluations, developing a performance evaluation system for our employees, so we can hold them, hold them accountable and have something that we can measure, um, them with. And, uh, and then also, I, and, and I'm not talking about lengthy discussions, but we need to update some things in our policy. I mean, the policy manual talks about step pay. Well, if that's rolled in, that goes away, we need to update that in the policy. We also need to come and land on a mark on how we're gonna hire the new employees in, because we don't want compression issues. So maybe the first couple of years, we say, uh, the, the maximum we can bring you in is the third pay rate within that range. And then going forward, as our employees progress through the range, and the, the, the tenure has taken effect, then, okay, maybe we can hire you in at the fifth hourly rate or the sixth hourly rate. Mario, did you want to add anything to that?
So, when you talk about in this third, I mean, in this paragraph, staff will create the policies and procedures. I mean, you're gonna go ahead and institute the pay, but then you're gonna create the policies, and then the staff will handle the pay increases, and the staff will look at the data, and the staff will evaluate, and so who is staff for that?
It's a combination of human resources, city manager, um, ultimately, he's gotta approve all the policies. And then having discussions, continued discussions with the directors. And, uh, I'm trying to think exactly where that was.
You don't foresee any issues of, of increasing the pay and, and putting the people in their classifications with an employee thinking that they belong higher, and you don't have a policy in place? That sort of makes me a little.
No, and those are things we're probably, we're gonna work through and still have to work through. And even when we get policies in place, you know, we're s- and, and so there has been some discussion on what they need to present and what they need to bring forward to make those changes. And I think there's three or four that actually have sent in some new job descriptions and information. And the kind of the direction is we're getting, let's get this poli- play, pay pa- sorry, pay plan in place, kind of where you're slotted now. And now that we're, you're updating your job description and maybe duties and things, let's take a look at that. And if we need to put them in another grade, then that's something we can do. And I think that will be ongoing through the life of this plan, so.
Do you want to add something?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, you know, part of this process is, uh, this, this started back in March, and it's going on nine months. And, um, the scope of the original plan was just to look at base pay. Uh, didn't include anything related to fringe benefits, didn't include anything related to looking at our policies and offering up options when it comes to bringing in people at a higher rate than just the minimum, or doing counteroffers when you have talented people that may be exiting the organization and they could create a gap. We don't, we don't do that. We basically say, well, thank you for your service, and we wish you the best. And we're gonna le- let a, a good tenured employee that has a lot of knowledge walk out the door. And, um, that's, quite honestly, uh, not really a very good practice. Um, and so also trying to allow your, your hiring managers to bring people at a higher rate based on experience, education, uh, knowledge, skillset, certifications, whatever, licensures, uh, that the, the pay is twelve seventy, take it or leave it. Um, you know, and you're gonna let a, a talented person walk out of your doors when you could just bring them on board and let them hit the door running, hit the ground running, excuse me. So, um, I think part of this effort is to, let's get this plan implemented. It, it's been a long time coming. It's one of the number one things that I've heard our employees is, when do we look at our pay? It's been asked, we've been, it's been brought up before, and it hasn't happened. And so I think this is a good first step, and what I can assure you is that I'll work with, with Stephen and even, uh, Matt. Uh, we talked about that when we were going through this, uh, practice run prior to this presentation, is to look at our policies and make adjustments. We can make those pretty quickly, uh, and allow our managers latitude to make those decisions on behalf of the organization. But certainly, we would like to just get this plan implemented as soon as we possibly can. Certainly, we're laying out and let Pam speak here just for a few minutes on the options that are presented to you. And, and what we would recommend is you allow us to, to implement the entire plan, and then let us come back to you later here in the next, uh, couple of months, uh, with revised policies if, if needed, based on our, 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 our procedures, to bring back policy so that we can get, get folks put in the, in the place where they need to be placed, uh, for, for compensation.
And she's gonna speak to the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead. Or, well, let me check real quick, any questions so far? Amelia, you okay? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, now the fun part, how to pay for all of this. Um, if you'll recall, we do have money that is, uh, built into the current year's budget in each of our funds to, um, offset the cost of the implementation of this pay structure. Um, at the time that we were preparing the budget, we were not exactly sure exactly what the, the final, um, pay scale and pay plan was going to look like. And so we do have a, a good estimate that was built in. Um, if you'll notice, I have actually given you, um, annual cost on here. I, I think it's important to know the full cost of, of what this pay structure is going to be. When I come back to you with a budget amendment request, it will not be for this full thing. We have, in the general fund, four hundred thousand dollars that is already budgeted. Um, we will only need to cover nineteen pay periods since we're starting with the first pay period in January. And so instead of like, for general fund, instead of needing the full, full seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the first year, we're going to need five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Well, four hundred thousand of that is already in the budget. And so what I'm gonna come to you with is a, is a budget amendment to fund that additional one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in the general fund. In the utility fund, our estimate was, um, about a hundred thousand dollars, and those, those positions came in a lot lower. And so we're not going to be requesting any additional money. Um, an annual cost for the utility fund is right at fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, sanitation fund as well, um, those, that was actually exactly, we, we budgeted twenty-five in sanitation. So really, the general fund is the, is the only thing that we, we will need to discuss on the budget amendment side. Um, and like I said, it, it will be for nineteen pay periods, beginning, um, with the first full pay period in January. Um, what we had discussed earlier, and I think it was on a slide or two before, was the options, and that's the direction that we need tonight. Option one, of course, is to implement the pay plan as presented with all of the, of the, um, areas that, that Stephen covered, the implementation of a minimum wage, the, um, overall increase of five hundred dollars per employee. These are all things that were not included in the very first, uh, iteration of this pay plan when we revealed in the budget. These are things that have been added since then. Option two is for y'all to ask us to modify this pay plan. These, these things, if, if maybe you don't want to have the minimum wage set at twelve seventy, or, um, maybe you want it at a different rate, or, um, not to do the overall five hundred dollar increase. This, this pla- plan will tell you exactly what that is gonna cost you. Well, not exactly, I'm back up. It's an approximate estimate of what this is going to cost you. And so for general fund, just implementing the base plan, getting everybody plugged in to those pay grades that are as close as, as we could get to their market minimum, is gonna cost for the general fund about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars annually. There's an additional about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for adding that additional twenty-one hundred dollars over the market minimum for firefighters and police officers, as well as that implementation of those steps that Stephen was talking about on those positions based on the years of service. Um, and so that, that's about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, there was about fifty thousand dollars that we, um, increased once we decided to plug in everybody at that minimum, five hundred dollar overall increase. Um, what we found is that we have a significant number of our employees that were already at market minimum. And so when we plugged them into the pay scale, we really, honestly, there was one employee that the annual increase with salary, TMRS, and, um, FICA was fourteen dollars a year. And so that is what kind of prompted us to say, yes, this is not a, this is not a raise, it is a market adjustment. But at the end of the day, we want them to feel like we have done something and, and got them into a plan and, and, and they see the, the difference on their paycheck. And fourteen dollars a annual increase was, was not it. So like Stephen said, we looked at the thousand dollars, that was extremely expensive to start that out. So we bumped it back down to the five hundred overall increase. For general fund, that cost about an additional fifty thousand dollars. That is an optional thing. We can go back and just plug people into where they are at the next step without losing money, or we can maintain this five hundred dollar overall increase. And of course, the, the minimum wage. Now, you'll notice that the minimum wage, uh, amount does not show up in any of the other funds. General fund is the only one that had those positions that came in under the twelve seventy. Um, and so they're the only ones that are really impacted by that. Um, but all funds, of course, were impacted by the, the minimum five hundred dollar overall increase because we did that across the board. Um, and so at the end of the day, utility, sanitation, and airport fund, they will not need any additional funding, um, to, to implement this um, partial year or full year. General fund, we are going to request, um, a, a budget amendment, and I'm hoping to bring that to y'all on the fifteenth meeting um, to cover that additional hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, um, that we'll need to implement this in January. So, if you have any questions?
So, for next year's budget, what, will there be an increase? You know, I mean, this goes, so what are we looking at?
So let's talk, general fund, right now, we have that four hundred thousand built in. So next year, the total cost is seven hundred and twenty-five. So we will build in additional three twenty-five in next year's budget. And then one of those things that we were talking about, this is step one. Step two is, is the merit system and the, and the, in evaluation, all those things, those policies and procedures have to be built because next year, we're getting them in a pay structure, and then next year is working through that pay structure. How do they move? We've moved them here, how do they move within their pay grades now? And so that is going to a complete merit system, and so we have to have some procedures to do that. But then we have to be able to budget those, those, uh, merits as well. And so, yes, next year's budget will include what we have, plus this, this additional funding, and then we're going to try to set aside some additional money to, to fund merits going forward as well.
Because any changes you make, you would not go down. They would either stay the same or they would go up, and there's probably quite a few that would go up. So you can't even estimate what, I mean, that additional.
Are you speaking of, of people moving positions within the pay grades? I will tell you, that's, that, when, when Stephen said we've done this sixty-seven times, that's probably very conservative. We have done this a lot. I, I don't think we're going to have a con- a considerable amount of those. We know that we have, we've had discussions with all our department directors. We do have a handful of positions. Um, one, for instance, is, is, is a young lady that is, uh, classified as an office assistant, and she has, her job function is not an office assistant. It's evolved over the years, but her job duties, I mean, her job description has never been updated. And so they're in the process of doing that. So she will be looked at individually because now she's gonna have a job description that actually reflects what she does. And so then we'll have to move her into a pay grade that reflects her actual duties. Now, for the most part, every, the vast majority of city employees are working within the job descriptions they have. But we do have a handful of employees. Will it be significant? No, ma'am. It's not going to, at the end of the day, it's not going to be a budgetarily significant amount of people going forward. Now, like Stephen said, this is an ongoing, as long as we have the, the pay plan, we will always have people that say, you know what, I started out as an office assistant, but y'all have morphed my job, and now I'm the ma- office manager. We need to relook at that, and that's, that's gonna happen five years from now, ten years from now, and we'll always have that. But what we're, we're wanting to do is have that policy in place that says, when we have that, how do we handle it?
Okay, let's pause for just a minute because it's after five thirty-five. I think council's gonna want to have some discussion. Uh, and so either we need to pick this, I need to ask our city secretary or our city attorney, city manager, council members, what your thoughts are on picking this up later this evening, um, so that we can go ahead and, and get on with our agenda because I noticed we have quite a few people here.
I'm good with, uh, continuing later.
Continuing later?
Sure.
Okay, Amelia? You want to pick this up and just, are you okay with picking it up in, in a little while? It's a lot, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, and I, I have written down questions that, that, that I want to ask Ms. Curbo. So it, it is, it is a lot. It's running pretty hard into bedtime with the children, if I'm being honest.
Okay, and I.
But we can give it a shot.
Right, um, Mr. Davis, Mr. Canasares, any advice? Or opinion on what you would?
Well, uh, you know, uh, certainly, we obviously ought to be respectful of the public's time, and obviously, we've got a, we've got a five-thirty start, we're running already behind, as you noticed. Um, if, we, we're really at the very end of the presentation, uh, and so really, it's just, at that point, uh, that's, I believe, that's probably the last slide that we have outside of questions. And so if it's okay with the council, we would really love to be able to have this continued conversation at the conclusion, um, uh, even before we g- break into executive session, does that allow, Jeff?
I, I think, I think we'd be, I think we'd be fine to do that. If, if we think that we have, you know, some significant questions, and I could certainly understand it. It's, it's a very significant topic. Um, and we are past the five-thirty hour. I think if we went a little bit further, it'd be fine, but if we think we have some significant questions, then we may want to pick that back up.
Okay, well, let's do that then.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I would assume, uh, let me ask of. Yeah, I was gonna ask, can Mr. Weatherly go, and unless, there's any questions of council, of the consultant?
Mr. Weatherly, thank you so much for joining us. Um, I don't, I, I don't believe we would need you, but, uh, again, but we're gonna pick this up a little bit later. And, uh, I'm sure Stephen can answer our questions, and if not, we'll, we can get in touch with you, so.
Yeah, and he can certainly text me, I'm happy to jump back on if, uh, if needed. So, yeah, no, I appreciate, uh, appreciate the conversation and the questions.
Great, well, thank you so much, have a good evening.
You guys too, thank you so much.
Okay. So, let's see, did we have anyone sign up for, uh, the open forum? Okay, and let's move on to our consent agenda, and if there's something someone would like to pull, and if not, the chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Mayor Brophy, um, I'd like to pull agenda item, um, five D. I just have, um, a couple of questions, or I don't have a particular problem with it, I just have some questions for our economic development director.
Okay, uh, why don't we go ahead and, and have those questions, and then we'll hold on the motion for just a moment? How are you this evening?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, go right ahead, Amelia.
Thank you, mayor. Hey, Larissa, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to ask you, I saw the list of, um, of the small businesses that are gonna receive the grant funding, um, and I wanted to ask you, I know that we had some discussion about this early on before you guys opened up the application process and everything, um, about what your outreach efforts would look like to make sure that businesses off of Main Street sort of, um, uh, maybe minor, minority-owned businesses or, or, or kind of a little bit more, I, what you consider off the beaten path of Nacogdoches, maybe downtown, et cetera, um, what that outreach would look like, or at least some emphasis on, on, on making sure that there was outreach done to those kinds of businesses. And so my question to you is, um, what outreach was done, um, to, to businesses that maybe wouldn't be typical ones that would know about, about this funding?
Um, first, the information was available in English and Spanish, like we promised it would be. Um, we primarily marketed through social media. We found that that is our best way to reach the most diverse audience. Um, it seems like most folks are on social media. Um, in addition to, I had a conversation, um, with Amy Mahaffey, the communications director, about the translation abilities of our social media to make sure that everything we post does translate. She said that it did, and things that wouldn't, like a PDF, we posted in both English and Spanish. Um, we were in just the traditional media, of course, um, K T R E, Daily Sentinel. Um, we did rely a lot on our banks. Um, our banks do have a footprint throughout the community, and actually, our banks worked very closely with a lot of those non-Main Street businesses over the past few months with the PPP loans. over the past few months with the PPP loans. Um, you can, if you have a chance to speak to a banker and ask them about that experience, they worked with a lot of businesses that they didn't necessarily see in the lobby all the time um because everybody needed it and everybody was aware of it. So relying on those bankers, um, they also knew the businesses that needed this. Um, in addition, they knew the businesses that could meet the standards that we set for the documentation requirements. Um, being a, essentially a federally funded program, we knew that the auditing requirements from the Texas Department of Emergency Management were going to be pretty rigorous. And so we required profit and loss statements and balance sheets and things like that. And so the banks were able to communicate with their clients that they knew could provide that information. Um, just an editorial note on that, we did go through with several applicants that had a lot of the information, but maybe didn't have a formal profit and loss statement or a balance statement. And we we showed them how to do that. Um, so we were able to overcome that for some folks. Um, and just a list of the banks that helped us, Bank Corps South, which does have locations on both the north side and the south side of town, um, Commercial Bank, Austin Bank, U-Bank, Southside and Regions. Were all banks um that really helped us push the information out and then also served on our committee to help me review the applications.
Okay, a quick follow-up. Um, with with relying on the banks, um, besides knowing that they have had experience with the P P E stuff with um with with really, I guess, diversifying um the kinds of businesses that they come into contact with, besides knowing that they have made those connections in the past, do you know of anything concrete that they on their own did in terms of outreach efforts? Or do you know for a fact that they kept that kind of diversity outreach in mind? Or are you just relying on the fact that they had had um contact with those businesses in the past?
I can't swear to the fact that, I can't swear to their outreach activities. Um, I do know that I had the conversation with several of those banks regarding our concern about reaching a diverse community. Um, and they all understood that. I know that they had the information available to them to pass out to 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 clients, to post in their lobbies, to to post on their social media and things like that. Um, as far as their individual activities, though, I I can't speak to those.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have, um, just for all of you from the last go around, the Fredonia Brewery sent a very nice note, um, thanking you all. And I will say um that everyone that we've spoken to that received the the grant last time was incredibly thankful. So thank you for this opportunity.
One quick question before you go. Uh, you have the list for the businesses that met the requirements. Do you have a list of the ones that was rejected?
I do. Um, we have just a few more that I may come back to you on the fifteenth with that are really close that we're working with to just say, please, 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 give me this one additional piece of information. And then the ones that were rejected were either outside the city limits. Um, they they didn't meet some of the financial standards. Um, or they they couldn't prove A, they had to prove either they were closed by an executive order or um they had a negative financial impact. And there were some businesses that were rejected because they couldn't, they didn't have that circumstance.
Can we get that list?
Sure, absolutely. I will, I will email it to all of you.
And you have uh some nonprofits that are going to be able to take advantage?
Yes.
That are coming?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Anderson, did you have anything?
No, sure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, if everyone's okay with everything else on uh the consent, then uh chair would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve their consent agenda as it is written.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as written. Um, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. For our regular agenda, uh, item A, consider approval or resolution of the city council of the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, adopting the city's legislative agenda program for the eighty-seventh state legislative session. Mr. Kanasaris, hello again.
Hello, good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. Um, let me uh get to that that slide. Uh, I think this will be very, very short and hopefully sweet. Uh, uh, at your last meeting, we had um our legislative consultant, Kelly Barnes, with Hillco Partners to to present to you all um what we were proposing as far as a legislative agenda. Uh, what I have for you here, uh, just a few slides that just kind of show the the categories that were that were being considered as part of the legislative agenda. Also in your packet is a is a resolution that would that would basically adopt that. And so uh really, the basics of of what we're looking at doing is certainly local control to to allow uh city councils across the state of Texas to to do what's best for their respective cities and 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 hopefully um not allow um uh Austin to dictate what those issues are. Um, you know, we've got a number of issues with the budget, certainly, through the uh through the state comptroller's office, expecting there to be a budget shortfall. So I I do believe that it's important for for our city to be as aggressive as possible to make sure that that uh because of the issues happening at the state level that they don't uh tip uh their hands at the local level and try to fix that shortfall. Um, so with that, uh, there's just a a number of things that we want to make sure that we uh protect, certainly local control. This'll uh is part of a decennial census, uh, it'll be a redistricting year here in twenty twenty-one. So we want to make sure that the representation that we have, that that Nacogdoches is not split into multiple districts. Um, property taxes, certainly, there was a lot of property tax reform that occurred at the last legislative session. Uh, I want to make sure that uh any further reforms are either minimized or clarified for for uh the benefit of local entities. Um, and um, and then a number of other things, whether it comes to economic development. Uh, I want to make sure that cities have the ability to utilize all the various uh economic development tools within their respective toolkits, that those that those don't get eroded. In fact, we would prefer that they get expanded uh so that we can continue to to increase our tax base here locally. Um, and that uh from a fiscal and financial perspective, that if there are additional CARES Act monies or COVID nineteen monies available through the federal or state level, that uh that certainly Nacogdoches is at the table so that we can uh receive our fair share. Um, and again, I don't want to go into great detail, you all have that in your packet. But I just wanted to make sure that we covered the highlights of that agenda. And then uh we, one last thing that's a little different uh from the past is is uh being a collaborative support uh or in support of our education partners here locally, where there is in Nacogdoches ISD and the university, Stephen at Boston State University, as they pursue their education efforts to at the legislature. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. But um it's all in your packet and hopefully none of it's changed from from the discussions we had two weeks ago.
Thank you. Mr. Baldwin?
Oh, uh. I get, this uh resolution, is it going to be read uh during the legislative session? Is it directed toward any particular legislator or is it just?
Uh, it's just a general resolution that this is the council's uh policy uh emphasis priorities for the next session. And so, again, it's on the record, uh, anybody can find it. And so uh certainly, as we write letters or if anyone comes calling, a staff member from a legislature calls and they would like to know what's the council's position on an issue, we'll give them not only the agenda within your packet, but also the resolution that goes along with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Anything else? Ms. Fisher?
No, mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, if there is no further discussion, then uh chair would entertain a motion.
A move that we uh approve, regular agenda item um number six A as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve agenda item six A, the approval of the resolution um as it is written. Uh, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and B, uh, the um amendment number one. And I will let him explain that, I believe we have Brian Bray? No, Jessica? Sorry, Jessica. Oh, I see now, historic sites and Main Street manager, I apologize. It's always nice to see you.
Thank you, thank y'all for having me, mayor, council. Um, I love what you've done with the place.
Thank you, it's a good aquarium, sort of, isn't it?
I like it, we all feel very safe now. Um, so we're here tonight to talk about the Zion Hill Church Restoration Project again. Um, but this is a very exciting step. It is our guaranteed maximum price for the project and hopefully approving the amendment to our construction manager at risk to allow us to spend those funds and get rocking and rolling. Um, so as we all know. Um, the Zion Hill Baptist Church was built in nineteen fourteen. It's one of the oldest African-American churches in East Texas. Um, it's a very significant building, it's right in the middle of a National Register Historic District. It's very important in the community and people have watched and waited on this project for years. Um, the restoration was started right around two thousand by the Nacogdoches County Historical Foundation. Um, after the congregation left this building, it fell into disrepair. Um, needed a lot of work very quickly, so they stepped in and started the project. The goal was always for the foundation to finish the outside and get it stable, then turn it over to the city so we could finish out the inside and then run it. Um, so the foundation turned the building over to the city in two thousand and ten. Um, since then, we've been doing a lot of research, grant writing. Um, recently, a lot of construction and discovery phases, putting together what I like to call my little dream team. So we have Army Curtis from Curtis Architecture, uh Cox Contractors as our construction managers at risk. Um, and so we put together this team and really figured out what's going on in this building. Um, you all approved our discovery phase expenditures in October of twenty nineteen. Um, that allowed us to put shoring and scaffolding up in the building, kind of open up the inside walls and figure out what the bones of this building looked like. Um, we didn't want to start bidding out the project and then get into it and figure out it was going to cost millions more because that's not what anybody wants to see. Um, so y'all approved that in October of twenty nineteen. We've been working ever since then, um, and now we're ready to move kind of to our next step. Excuse me. Um, so what we've done, um, once the discovery phase was essentially completed, is we finished up the architectural and engineering plans. Those were sent to the Texas Historical Commission because this is in the middle of a National Register District. There have been grant funds that come um with some overview protections in there. Uh, THC approved um all of our plans kind of in record time. Um, their usual timeframe is about six weeks for review, but they're all working at home in Austin right now. So we were a little worried it was going to take longer than that. But um our little dream team had everything, all our ducks in a row. And so they approved our plan in about two and a half weeks, um, which was wonderful because it allowed us to keep moving, keep the momentum going. Um, once the plans um were completed, Cox Contractors went to work bidding everything out. Um, they did a huge bidding process, which I'll explain. Um, but July twenty-first and twenty-second, we had pre-bid meetings. It was very important to all of us that if a subcontractor was going to bid on this building, they had to have seen it and been in it because we didn't want someone to get in over their head and hurt their business. And we also didn't want someone to give us a price, show up and have to walk off and we have to rebid something else. So we wanted to make sure people had eyes on this building. Um, for a lot of people, that was very exciting for them and a lot of people, it was terrifying. So um we had to space those days out for COVID precautions, so we didn't have sixty people in the building at once. Um, so we did two days of that. And then August sixth, all of the bids were due over to Cox Contractors. Um, the bidding process was much more involved than everything, anything I've ever done. Um, because once these plans were completed and approved by THC, um, to bid out the project, Cox Contractors had to split the bids into twenty-nine different packages. Um, so there was a package for plumbing, for electrical, for painting, splitting up everything. And each one had a whole bid bid package they had to send out. Um, so we had twenty-nine different packages. We, uh, Cox Contractors sent out six hundred and seventy-eight invitations to bid, whether it was a phone call, email, a visit, a letter, something asking them to come look at the project, asking if they wanted to be involved. From that six seventy-eight, we ended up with a hundred and fourteen potential bidders. Those are the ones that made contact and at least seemed interested. Um, and then from the one fourteen, we had seventy-one that actually submitted bids. Um, we had a few that made contact and realized it was our project and was very excited about the chance to do Zion Hill. And there was a few that said, thanks, but no thanks, it's way too big for our company, which is totally fine. Um, and from the seventy-one, all those bids then had to be individually reviewed. Uh, we had to make sure they had the correct insurance experience. They bid out the project as we requested it. We had a few very low bids that we were a little confused by, but then you look at it and realize they bid out just labor and not materials or vice versa, and that's not really what we asked them for. Um, so I had to make sure it kind of met our criteria. Then the selected bidders um that we decided to go with were all combined and put into our guaranteed maximum price. Um, and so I know you can see the big bold number, so I'll tell you how we got there in a second. Um, so our original estimate for this project that we made in twenty fifteen was about one point two million dollars. It was a good estimate for twenty fifteen, of course, this is five years later. And also, this estimate never took into account things like a discovery phase. Um, it never took into account bringing on Cox Contractors as our construction managers at risk. Um, we didn't quite know some of the structural issues with the building at the time. Um, you know, we hadn't counted on shoring and scaffolding that would be up for months. Um, and of course, there is price inflation. Um, believe it or not, COVID has also affected the price of two-by-fours, um, which I didn't know would be an issue, but apparently it is. Um, and also trying to get materials takes a little longer, so there's additional shipping costs. So it was a good estimate for twenty fifteen, but it's twenty twenty now. Um, so that was our initial estimate. Um, our initial guaranteed maximum price that Cox came back with first was this big one point eight, almost one point nine million dollars. Um, that price, we were not exactly surprised that it was that much, but it's not something that was within our budget. Um, and so we all kind of went back to the drawing board, which I'll explain on the next slide. Um, and then came back with our current guaranteed maximum price that is in your amendment um for the one point six and some some change um in there. Um, the funds for this project come from our hotel occupancy tax, um, also with donations from the Nacogdoches County Historic Foundation and the Charles and Lois Bryant Foundation. Uh, both foundations are still very involved in the project, even though it's not their building anymore. It's still kind of everybody's baby, so we're all still taking care of it, which is wonderful. So this one will show you kind of how we got from the one point eight to one point six. Um, Cox Contractors has done so much legwork with this, and that's part of their job as our construction managers at risk, is to find us these cost savings, to work with all these subcontractors because all these contractors speak the same language that I don't necessarily speak fluently. Um, and so they went back, looked at where we could find potential cost savings. The way we did that was not by cutting out huge sections of this project. We didn't say, never mind, we're not going to paint it. We, Cox Contractors went back and worked with some of our subcontractors who offered up um some price reductions. So they saved some money on their back end and then passed the savings along to the city. Um, some of it was by increasing Cox's uh scope of work. So, you know, Cox Contractors will be on site anyway, so their contractors can do some of the work cheaper than it would be to bring in a separate sub. Excuse me. Um, so we did that, um, and then also reevaluating some of the scope of work. Um, when we initially bid some of these things, it was taking out all of the windows in the basement, taking them off-site, restoring them and putting them back. But once we looked at it a little closer, it's like, okay, really twelve windows need to be worked on immediately and completely rebuilt. But the other, you know, twelve to fifteen, we can work into our annual building maintenance fund. Um, because maybe they just have one little piece of rotten wood that we can get to. Or there's one cracked pane that that piece of glass can be replaced, but we don't have to use the whole window. Um, that's things we do at all of our historic sites throughout the year because no matter what, there is always, always rotten wood somewhere. And so we kind of factor those things into our annual plans anyway. Um, so we found a few scope of work changes like that. The only actual scope changes, um, and they are very minor when you look at our overall price, but I wanted to point them out that, you know, these are changes in what we were actually going to do. Um, one is the mill work, and really, all that is, is there was going to be a kitchen downstairs. And so instead of having two walls full of um, full of cabinets and countertops, we're going to have one wall. Um, it doesn't really change the functionality of the kitchen because you can still do the same stuff. It's just we won't have an additional prep area. Um, another thing is our ceramic tile. Instead of having a more historic-looking tile, we're going to go with a standard tile. Um, I love the historic look of things, but it's also an ADA compliant restroom in a basement um that isn't really historic downstairs, it's more of historic upstairs in the sanctuary. So those minor changes we can do. Um, the only reason I point those out is because they're the only actual scope changes to the project. We were actually able to come up with cost savings in more creative ways. Um, and this is how we got from one point eight to the one point six, which is now within our budget. Um, we presented all of these numbers and information in our uh process at a meeting on November ninth that was with Cox Contractors, Army Curtis, city representatives, the Nacogdoches County Historic Foundation and the Wright Foundation. We wanted to make sure that kind of our stakeholders knew what we were doing, knew the changes we had made, even though there are very few of them, and knew how we got to these numbers. Um, they all met and gave me a resounding approval for this project and where we were going. They're still fully behind it. Uh, Betty Shin is here today and can attest to that. Um, so we had that meeting November ninth and have been prepping all these documents for y'all today. Um, of course, we have our December first for our meeting here. Um, if this amendment is approved, um, all the ones in italics are kind of what we're going to do coming up. Um, so we can have a notice to proceed by the end of the week over to Cox Contractors. December seventh, our great project sign would go up that has all of our information about funders, has our phone numbers. So if people have questions about the project, they can call me, they can call Army, Cox Contractors can get the most up-to-date information. Um, December eighth through twelfth, Cox Contractors would execute all the subcontracts. Um, because there's so much paperwork that goes into all this, so they would have to do the subcontracts, the insurance, the bonds. And then in early January, you would see actually boots on the ground, hammers and nails, and actually a project mobilization. Um, as part of this amendment, Cox, um, submitted their substantial completion date. And they say that's going to be January, or excuse me, February fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. So we're estimating a little over a year for this project. Um, we're very hopeful with that date since there was so much work done on this front end. That we have a pretty good idea, knock on wood, of what this building has in store for us. Um, and so we're asking you to review this amendment. Um, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you may have. Um, we also have Cox Contractors here and Army Curtis is here to answer any you have as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before we get to council questions, is there anyone, uh, here in attendance tonight that would like to say anything? Okay. Nope. Okay, council, let's start with, uh, Mr. Anderson.
I guess my only question really is, um, with the proposed scope changes. Um, are those, have those modifications also been approved by THC?
Uh, we have not submitted those to them, but THC doesn't necessarily review your type of tile.
Okay.
Um, the only issue they had when we first submitted was they didn't like a very large fan we had proposed, which we have taken out.
Right.
Um, and somehow pressure washing slipped past me and they're like, you can't pressure wash this building. And I'm like, I'm sorry, I know. Um, so we haven't submitted things like this, but they don't necessarily look at the look of the tile or the look of the kitchen. Um, it's more kind of what you're doing to the woodwork and the historic windows.
Yeah, there's more.
But yeah, if those are approved, we will send them a letter to let them know, but we don't foresee that there would be any issues.
Okay. That's, that's my only question.
Um, Amelia?
Yes, Mayor. Um, hi, Jessica. Thank you.
Of course. How are you?
Fine. How are you?
Good.
Good. This is super exciting. Um, I just have a couple of, um, easy questions. One, I, I'm assuming that since you've been the one presenting on this, you're, you are the, the, the staff point person who is responsible for sort of overseeing the, the, the progress of, of the restoration.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, and then based on my substantial watching of HGTV in previous years. I know that there's a difference between restoration and renovation. Is this a total restoration, um, or are there some parts that can't be restored? Or, or, or are being renovated instead of restored? Um, and if so, why?
Yeah, this is kind of a split project. Um, it's more of a, um, a restoration upstairs. Um, we want to keep the sanctuary and the balcony as historically accurate as possible. Um, which is relatively easy because a lot of the historic elements are still there. Um, we still have the pews. We still have a lot of the original woodwork. The windows have been well preserved and then restored in the past. So the upstairs is definitely going to be more of the event space, public space. We'll have the museum area in there. Um, and so we're going to restore and preserve as much of the original as we can on the main floor and the balcony. Um, the downstairs is going to be much more of a renovation because it has to be ADA compliant. Um, so we need to make sure that we have ADA compliant entrances and exits into the building. Um, we will have a lift elevator in there so we can get people from the basement onto the main use floor. Um, and of course, restrooms need to be ADA compliant, need to be useful for everyone. Um, so the basement's a little bit more of a, a modern renovation. And we'll also have kind of an office in there, reception area. Um, and so that will function more of a, an office, public use area, and then upstairs is more of the historic museum event space.
Got it. That makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Bolden?
Thank you for explaining about the scope changes because I was concerned that it would take away from the historic look of the building. But, and that would be only in the basement area?
Yes, yeah, those scope changes, we wanted to make sure that we pushed all the money we had to make sure the building stayed as preserved as possible. So the scope changes, because I'm also a very big stickler on historic accuracy, and even the tile kills me a little bit, but we'll do what we can. Um, but yes, those are in the basement, so they are going to be used heavily by the public. So there is also, we have to look at, you know, what is going to hold up as well. Um, because sometimes if you put the more fragile elements in there, they break down faster. So more modern tile is fine, um, and the millwork I think should be fine as well, but those are both in the basement.
Thank you very much.
Well, uh, gosh, I, I, I would love to know how many people in Nacogdoches have worked on this project at some point or another or contributed to it or bought some, I mean, it's just amazing and how long it has taken. And, and I would like to thank the, the Historic Commission and, and Army and, and who's hung in there for, for a while. And you, ma'am, leading the charge.
It takes a village.
It does. It does, absolutely. So if, uh, there are no other questions, um, council, uh, the chair is ready to entertain a motion.
Well, I make a motion to approval of amendment number one, establishing a guaranteed maximum price of one point six six two dot, a comma, six oh nine as a substantial completion date of February twenty twenty-two.
February fifteenth, twenty.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you second Amelia?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I will second.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so it's been moved and seconded, um, that we approve, uh, amendment number one as listed in agenda item six B. Uh, if there's no further discussion from council, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Um, we are now going to return to our work session, so if there's anyone that's in attendance that would like to leave now, you may leave now. Um, if you'd like to stay, it'd be great too. Um, before you get started, I do want to, I hope I can speak for the council in saying that, you know, yes, we asked you all to do this, and this is terrific to look at these, these salary adjustments. We, we want to be fair. We would like to be leading, I think, in our area. Um, and you all have been working on this probably day in and day out for months. And so it is not that, I don't want you to think that we, there's a negativity here at all. It's just a lot of information for us to absorb at one time. So I just, I got to thinking about it and I thought, oh, my gosh, I know how hard you all have worked on this. But trying to make it all make sense in our minds because this is a lot of money and it's our citizens' money. And so we, you know, have that responsibility to do our due diligence, make sure we understand it all. Um, so, um, let's see, we were going, I believe, did you want to say anything before we proceed with Amelia?
I really honestly don't exactly remember where we stopped, but I do think, uh, Amelia maybe was about to ask some questions. I, I think I got through the, the, the majority of the, the cost part of it, so.
So go ahead, Amelia.
Hey, okay, thank you. Um, this might seem, and it might actually be a really basic question. But I'm just kind of trying to, to have it make sense in my head. How in a year with, you know, lower revenues than, than expected, thanks to COVID and no tax increase. How we're adding, adding on the pay raise generally, but then on top of that, the extra one hundred and thirty-seven dollars that wasn't, um, budgeted. And I, I'm not asking you to say like, oh, well, we saved this line item, we saved, you know, two hundred dollars on in this one. We said, it's just sort of a, a more of a bird's eye view. Given that we didn't raise taxes and given that, that, that like every city, you know, we've been hurt financially by COVID. How, how, how this has happened, how we're able to do this.
No, no, definitely. It's, it's a great question. And, um, honestly, on the fifteenth, um, I'm actually going to be presenting to y'all a recap of last year. And I think you're all going to be pleasantly surprised at how well the city actually ended the year. Um, we actually were up over a half a million dollars in revenues over anticipated last year, even with COVID. Um, that was due to several, several, uh, points, and we'll, we'll cover that in the next thing. But at the end of the day, the, the economy of the city of Nacogdoches did not take as big a hit as a lot of the cities across the state of Texas did. And so financially, we are sitting in a very good place, even considering the pandemic. And so, um, rest assured, Mario and I have had this conversation on numerous times. I would not ask y'all to fund something that I don't think that he and I together can help build into this budget for y'all next year, for y'all to approve. If it was not there, we would not be asking. Um, one of the things that, if you'll recall, we, um, were very, very conservative with sales tax budget for next year. Um, the way our sales tax is performing now, we should exceed that with hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, even under the circumstances that we are, you know, seeing in the state and the country right now. We have done, um, uh, over and above what a lot of cities have done, um, on the sales tax front. And so, um, even if we do have another dip at some point in this, this fiscal year. Um, we, we, we kind of pre-planned for that and we very, very conservatively budgeted that. And so, um, at the end of the day, I think the, I think the revenues are going to be there. Um, another, the, another point that, um, that is a very significant portion of this is when I come to y'all with a budget amendment, I'm not asking for new money. Um, we have the four hundred thousand and we have also had very extensive discussions with, um, Chief Seavey. And we, of course, have had, um, um, numerous vacant positions there. And we are going to be able to cover this additional amount with those vacancies for the rest of this fiscal year. And so at the end of the day, we're not asking for new money this fiscal year. Um, and so, um, you know, I understand it is, it's a very significant amount of money. Our, our, our personnel costs are seventy-five to eighty percent of our budget. It is a very significant thing. Um, but if we did not feel that we would be able to bring you a budget next year that encompassed this and be able to do some other things. I, I don't think that Mario or I, either one, or Stephen would, would ask that of you. Um, so we have done this over and over. We have looked at it. We have played with the numbers and we've realized we want to do this, but we can't afford it. This is a plan that we think we can implement and, and fund. And, you know, for, at the end of the day, benefit the citizens of the city with a more experienced workforce. And that we can provide, um, services, um, hopefully more efficiently with, with people that we are actually paying, um, a, a, uh, good wage to and be able to retain that experience. Because that at the end of the day is very important to have that experience, whether it's your police officer on the street or it's the guy that's picking up your trash can. We want somebody there that is, is, you know, happy with their job and, and fulfilled. And part of that is, is the salaries, of course.
Did you have anything else, Amelia?
Yes, um, and I, I, I absolutely get that. And I really appreciate Mayor Brophy at the beginning, um, speaking on behalf of council and saying, no, we think, we do think that this is a very good thing. And we want, um, our staff to, to be paid what they deserve to be paid. But I think, you know, also it, citizens of Nacogdoches who are listening in or who might be listening in later, you know, should, should also know. And I know, I, I have, you know, the utmost trust in you that, that you wouldn't be proposing it if you didn't think that we could pay for it. But I do think that for the people who have those questions in mind, it is helpful for it to actually be articulated. Um, so I understand that from the vacant positions of, of, you know, the police department, we're able to, to, to use those salaries that aren't actually being paid. Um, but, you know, the, the whole idea of that raise is that those, those vacant positions will be vacant no longer. Um, and that money won't be available money anymore. That's not money that we can count on in the next year. So, um, where is, where do you think that the money is going to come from next year for this?
Of course, a lot of it, it, it boils down to raising the revenues. And, uh, you know, under, understanding that not only are we going to, to look at raising those property tax, I mean, those sales tax, um, revenues next year. Um, you know, when we have a fully functioning police force, there are consequences of that. And one of that is we can have our traffic division re-implemented because we had to, to, to pull people from traffic because we were so many officers short. When you don't have traffic division, you don't have a lot of ti- tickets going out. If you don't have tickets, you don't have the municipal court, you know, collecting. And so there's a trickle effect of, of what we're doing here. And so, yes, I do anticipate that, that we shall see the municipal court, um, revenues will come back. Um, I think we're going to continue to see our sales tax revenues come back. So at the end of the day, I, I think that our revenues are going to be there in, in our budget next year to cover this. Does that, does that answer what you were, were trying to get at, Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm done, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bolden, did you have anything?
Yes, um, earlier you made the statement, set aside funding. Would you explain that to me?
When, when we're talking about the four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so in the budget for, for the current fiscal year, what y'all adopted included a four hundred thousand dollar lump sum that was not budgeted at each line item. We didn't put ten thousand in the police and fourteen thousand in the fire. We put a lump sum of four hundred thousand dollars as a one-line item. And so what we're going to ask you now is I'm going to tell you where I need that money. So these raises are going to be necessary to put, you know, two hundred thousand in, in fire and police and maybe ten thousand dollars in the street department or whatever. Those, those are, those were set aside to fund this in one-line item. So we're, what I'm going to ask you is, is to move that money where it belongs. Instead of having it just as a placeholder in the budget, we're actually going to move it to where the, each department, um, so that we can fund the, this pay structure, is to move it to where it belongs as far as every department within the city.
And as for this year's budget?
That's for this year's budget.
And, and, uh, next year's budget. I mean, you, you said you're convinced it's going to be a budget that can, uh, whatever we put in place now would cover that for the next budget. Now, you know, we have each, it's only three months into this budget.
No, that's, that's true.
Yeah, and to, you know, say that next year budget, and we hadn't even started working on next year.
No, no, and, and, and that's exactly true. And, and of course, I think a lot of, I don't know that I knew that when I was going to college, but a lot of this job is, is, you got to have a crystal ball and try to figure it out. But part of that is looking at past history. And yes, this year is different because of the pandemic, but we also have not responded the way a lot of, of cities have to the pandemic. It has not hurt us as significantly. And so what we have to do is basically look at our history and look at what we have funded, what we can fund. And, and basically project for the next, um, for the next year and the next, actually Mario is going to have us part of y'all's budget next year. He's tasked me with, with preparing a five and ten-year look-forward budget for y'all. And so that is when I will be plugging this in long-term so that you actually see on paper how to make this work.
Yeah, because, I mean, in the past, our budget hasn't looked up roses year from year to year. I mean, this is the first year that I've heard to say that, you know, our budget has really, really been great. But in the past, it didn't seem that way.
Yeah, um, thi- this year has been an anomaly for us. It really has. Um, but at the end of the day, I think, um, there, there is a, there is a misconception, um, outside of people that look at the numbers every day that, um, that, that the city has had some financial issues. At the end of the day, the operational budget may have times that the revenues don't cover the expenditures. And we had that for a couple of years, especially in the utility fund. But at the end of the day, once we get to the end of the year and we realize that, and, and I, I know Amelia mentioned earlier not about saving two hundred dollars in this line item and that line item. But at the end of the day, that's what happens. And you'll notice if, after I present, make this next presentation to y'all, that we had over a million dollars of unspent budgetary expenditures from last fiscal year. Now, a portion of that is because we, we kind of put things on the hold on, on spending. But if you'll look back over time, the last three to five years, we have had hundreds of thousands of dollars of unspent budget. So it's always there. We can, we are very, very conservatively budgeting on both revenues and expenditures. And so we always pick up some of that money at the end of the day. Um, so, uh, you know, I think we're at a place now that, that we're better financially. It didn't happen overnight. It happened over a multitude of years. But we've gotten ourselves to a place now that I think we've built a, an operational budget that really works for us. And so we can work within that. And now we've got those additional funds that, that, you know, the one time, the reserve funds that can be used. And now we've got those additional funds that, that, you know, the one-time, the reserve funds that can be used to, to, to fund, um, capital and one-time improvements. And you are going to see in the next budget cycle that, um, we're gonna, we're gonna come to y'all with some, some requests on that because you are going to have the ability to make some, some, uh, purchases that, that maybe we haven't been able to in the past, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Anderson?
Um, well, I guess briefly, I would like to reiterate what, uh, what I think Mayor Brophy said, which is I, I love the idea of, of making our pay more, um, competitive in order to draw more talent and keep more talent here. Um, and also for our existing staff, um, employees to feel as valued as they should. Um, I guess sort of go back to what Ms. Fisher said, um, to articulate this in an easy-to-understand term. Um, and this may, this may be kind of an arbitrary question, but can you distill the difference, um, in what this proposed plan would cost? Maybe starting next fiscal year, um, just estimating compared to, um, what, what the existing, um, I guess, uh, for lack of a better term, the existing pay plan is. Um, is there a percentage increase that, that it can be distilled down to?
Actually, well, the, the thing is, is the way that our pay plan currently is, everybody has a set base pay. Okay, and so what we've done is we've taken that base pay and their step and compare that to the market. And so this seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the general fund is representative of taking every employee where they currently are and getting them into a pay grade that is closest to their market minimum. And so that's a hard number. It's not a percentage anywhere. It's literally one person may be six hundred dollars, one person may be sixteen hundred dollars, one person may be three thousand dollars. It just is to, to get them there. So an annual cost to take us from where we are now to where we need to be to start the program is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now, once they're in the plan, moving forward, it's not seven hundred and twenty-five thousand every year. It's based on a percentage and that will be a one percent or a two percent merit. Whatever that we go through the budget process that y'all decide you want to budget a two percent merit, not all employees are going to be eligible for a merit. Merit, of course, is, is based on your performance. We don't expect every employee to, to, um, to earn a merit. Now, that would be great if we had everybody working to that, and that's where you want to get. But starting out, that's not where we're going to be. So yes, going forward, there's going to be an incremental increase for those merits. But regardless of when you start this program, the cost to start, to go from today to the program is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the general fund and fifty-five thousand for the utility fund.
There would also be, excuse me for interrupting, but there would also be the increases because after, during that first year, you're going to be classifying everyone.
Yeah, yeah.
As we develop the policy, as the policies developed.
Well, thi- this gets everybody into the plan. And the only people that are, the policy is going, that we were discussing earlier is those outliers that currently are performing a job that doesn't match.
That doesn't fit, yeah.
And that, I, I, I would say probably less than a dozen people, citywide.
Yeah.
Just to add to that too is maybe they go into another classification, but the increase they're going to see is not going to change. They'll just have more of, a, a further range on the backend that they can max out to. And so the, the increase may be five hundred dollars, whether they're in grade fifteen or grade seventeen, but they'll have a, a, a longer range to work.
And we were shown a representative, but is this, this includes all employees?
Yes.
From the top down or?
So those, those, uh, out of those four or five positions?
Right.
Those were done for every position.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Anything else?
No, no.
Um, can you bring up the slide that showed us what you would like for us to?
On the options?
On the options before that. Because, you know, at the end of the day, our, our, our employees are our city government's best asset. And, and if we want them to take care of us, we need to take care of them. I mean, they, they deserve that and we have been asking for that for years specifically. I know we kept talking about the police department, but we really, um, I'm glad we are at this point. I, I don't like feeling a little bit rushed, but, but if, if, you know, it's for the employees, so I, I get it.
I assume the theory, I mean, you mentioned the police department increased revenues, um, as an example, but I assume the theory is that across the board, that you, if you have more experienced, more talented people, you're going to have greater efficiencies, you're going to have better service.
And that's the expectation. And I know that's Mario's expectation of us is, is, you know, we are going to pay you the wage that is for this particular job. We expect you to do that job.
Yeah.
And, and yes, I think you're going to see across-the-board efficiencies. Um, not all of them are, are, are money coming into the coffers, but a lot of it is money saved because you have somebody that you bring in, the talent that understands this is, I know y'all have done this this way for twenty years, but maybe you should do it this way.
Right, heard that a time or two.
Um, yeah, so I, I think there's going to be hard cost savings, there's going to be soft cost savings. Across the board, it, it's just better for, for the employees and it's better for the operations of the city. So what you were asking about the options, so your options are, one, proceed with all of the, the, uh, assumptions that, that Stephen talked about. So that would be getting everyone into a pay grade that is the closest to their minimum, market minimum. Um, one of those things would be to implement the, the twelve dollar and seventy cent, uh, minimum wage. Another one of those op- uh, options is the five hundred dollar overall increase per employee. Another one of those options is paying the additional twenty-one hundred and ten dollars over the market minimum for firefighters and police officers. Those are all the optional things that we've added since we started this project. So option one is to accept all of that. Option two is for y'all to say, hey, we want to do something, but maybe we don't want to do the minimum wage. Maybe we want to do twelve fifty, maybe we want to do thirteen. Those are those options. Or maybe we don't want to do the overhaul five hundred increase, tell us what two fifty, what, or we don't want to do any of it, just plug them in where they are. So those are your options. And so if you'll jump over to the next, um, page, so this basically breaks it down. So the base plan, you can tell us just do the base plan. Or base plan and the over-market for fire and police, or the base plan and the minimum wage, or any combination thereof. But that would be option two, and that would be where I would need you to kind of give me some ideas of what of those options you want to take off the table tonight, or what you want to add to it. Um, option three is for us to say, you know what? I'm not sure that I like this, where this is going and maybe we need to regroup and rethink the whole project. And so those are our options. And so that's kind of what I want to be able to bring to y'all is, is, is final numbers that actually make sense and are good for the budget. And I need to know if, if each of these assumptions that we have made and, and along the way are what y'all want us to do.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good, ma'am.
Um.
Can you make, make sure that you reiterate not taking action tonight?
No, 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 no.
Right.
I just need some direction to know what, yeah, yeah, definitely not. That will be, that will come at a different meeting, yes.
Well, the fifteenth.
Yes.
Okay.
If, if, if we, yes, to, to, to set this in motion for the first January meeting, we will need to do that. Now, at the, at the same time, I mean, it is always at your discretion whether we change that January date or not. So, you know, keep in mind that, that's an option two, but yes, there's, there's no formal action, has to be done tonight. Just, just some direction for me to know, um, what numbers to pull.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, any other questions for her before we have a discussion?
No, not for.
Um, so, do you?
Certainly on the surface of it, it seems like something that needs to happen. Um, the amounts do not seem extravagant to me. Um, and, uh, in the interest of preserving experience and talent that we have and being able to bring in, um, more of that going forward, I, I'm very much in, in favor of the plan on the surface of it, certainly.
Uh, Amelia?
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Anderson. I think that my only thing is, I had asked earlier about the five hundred dollar overall increase, um, across the year. And, uh, Mr. Pearl said that that wasn't take-home pay that it, that, so I guess I would just be interested to see what a typical take-home pay from that minimum five hundred overall increase would look like. Um, because that amount of money spread across a year, once you start taking out all of that stuff. I just, I guess, I just wonder if that's really going to be a help, but also in the interest of, um, of what Jay, of what Councilmember Anderson said, I think that, um, you know, if it was put in there, it was put in there for a reason and in order to, to improve the, the pay structure in general. And so it's not that I'm against that overall increase, I just wonder what net benefit it provides.
Well, and I was wondering if you had, how many employees are there?
Uh, full-time, about three hundred, um, part-time, I'm sorry.
We currently have, I think, three hundred and forty-two budgeted positions. So employee-wise, with our vacancies, I think we have two hundred and ninety-seven, three hundred employees full-time and then probably twelve part-time.
Okay, and so you take that number multiplied at times five hundred and you come up with fifty thousand?
No, no, that's not exactly how it works. Um, okay, so, um, the way we wrote, rolled people into the, and I was calculating, that's why I have my phone. I wanted, I wanted to be able to answer that. Ah, no, I'm not on Facebook, I promise. Um, so how, how that works is, um, when we roll people into the pay structure, um, some positions, um, are basically, um, and I've lost my train of thought now because I'm worried about this calculation. So ask me again what you said and then I'm going to tell you.
How you came at it?
If it's five hundred, if you, if there's a minimum of five hundred overall for each employee, how do you get to the fifty thousand? So, um, at the end of the day, the, the, um, the structure of the, um, the pay plan is such that, um, oh God, I wish I had a, I had a piece of paper because this is so hard to make, make it, make it make sense without looking at it.
Sometimes when you plug them into the range, you, you, you take a labor and you plug them into the range, once you've added their step and their currently hourly rate together, it may come out, spit it, spit out to the end, it says the overall increase for this person, so they get an increase, is seventeen dollars.
Right.
And so we bump them to the next hourly rate that at least got them five hundred dollars. So five hundred dollars isn't an, an exact number. I don't think anybody exactly landed on five hundred dollars. So maybe the next hourly rate gave them six hundred and sixty dollars or seven hundred, somewhere around there. But five hundred was the threshold where if you were below that, then we're going to bump you to that next hourly rate within that range.
And, and so you may have already been getting a three hundred and fifty dollar increase, but that wasn't the five hundred, so we had to bump you, and there's, there's a one percent increment between each step. And so if you were at one that gave you a three hundred dollar and we bumped you to the next one, depending on what your, your pay rate was, that next step may have been a twelve hundred dollar increase. And so that's, that's, that's the, 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 it's not just five hundred across the board. You're going to have people that you're plugging into a, a one percent increment and, and you've, if you started with seventeen dollars and the next one may be six hundred, and that's where you go. But if it was seventeen and then four hundred and then seven hundred, then we had to put you down there. And so it's not necessarily five hundred per employee. Um, and these are all differences from the, the original, um, estimate. So your original estimate should, could have shown somebody plugging in at four hundred and ninety dollars. Well, once we made that five hundred dollar, it bumped them to the next one, well, they could have gone up even more over that. So this is the increment of, of the change because they were already getting some. This is just, if they were getting three fifty and went to five, this is the increment of that. Right, because the other part of that is in that five hundred and fifteen thousand, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's very, it's very confusing, it really is. But, um, it's just because there, there are so many, um, variables that, that were taken into consideration there, yeah.
And if you're wondering what exactly comes out of that, it's the, the TMRS, which is the fifteen point two-two percent that the city pays for the employees and then also the, the payroll taxes, seven point six-five percent. So that in addition to what the employees get on their check makes up the five hundred plus.
Right, and so on that, so let's just say, let's just say somebody did end up being exactly five hundred dollars budgetary increase. Of that, about four hundred and ten, four hundred and fifteen is salary and the rest of it is, is TMRS. And so for them, that would be about a fifteen dollar per pay period, because we have twenty-six pay periods, about fifteen dollars per pay period. So those that have, that are right at the five hundred dollar are looking at fifteen dollars. The majority of our folks fall within six and seven and eight hundred because of the way the pay scale works. Hardly anybody is right at five hundred. They're usually over six or seven. And so you're looking at probably twenty to twenty-five dollars per pay period on those positions alone, yeah.
And then it's, and then even further into that, not to complicate it more, but they're, they're paying their seven percent toward, out of that for TMRS and then however they sign up on their W, uh, four, is it W four?
Yeah.
W four on how they have with taxes withheld out of their check affects actually what goes in their pocket when they go home, so.
Okay. Amelia, does that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Do you have another one?
Nope.
Okay, so, um, if our, and you're satisfied with that answer, so you are okay with option one also?
I am.
Okay, Mr. Bolden?
I'm agreement that we need a pay structure in place that's beneficial and favorable for all the employees. The only modification that I would like to see would be the, uh, minimum wage fifteen instead of twelve seventy.
Can, can I speak to that real quick? Um, I, I think that's a great, great thing. I think it's a great thing for our employees. Um, and we can certainly go back and, and calculate, um, what that would, would, would cost for us. Understand though, that it's not just a matter of taking those people that are at twelve seventy and taking them to fifteen. Because then you have pay grades that are at fourteen twenty-five that now have to go to fifteen. And then you have this many employees that are all doing different work, that are all at the same pay grade. And so let me, for an example, we have a, um, office assistant one and an office assistant two, and they have different job structures. If we implement a pay grade of a minimum wage of fifteen, that, if what Stephen was calling compression earlier, what happens is now you have a pay grade, office assistant one and office assistant two, both making fifteen dollars an hour. So then what do you have to do? You have to work with that office assistant two and move them up a pay grade. And so it becomes a cascading effect up the, up the chain. And so that's when you start seeing significant increases in the overall, uh, cost of the plan. Now, I think that's a great place for us to be. I think it's one of those things that we were discussing earlier, that this is a good first step for us. And then as we go through the budget every year, if you want to say, hey, let's try to implement a thirteen dollar, a thirteen fifty and work to a fifteen, with that being, you know, your goal and mine is to get the city to a fifteen dollar minimum wage, I think that's doable over time. If we do it right now, it significantly changes the bottom line because it does affect so many other pay grades above it. Um, but it's definitely something that, that we can, we can, um, work towards.
What, what is the minimum wage right now for the city?
Well, we, we have people that are at seven ninety-two or something.
The lowest paid is seven dollars and ninety-two cents.
So the, the twelve seventy is, is a, a baseline that you came up with that will avoid that compression largely?
We, 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 actually, that's one of the first changes we made when we decided we wanted to do that, is we made sure that we did, that if we had a position that was at the twelve seventy, that we, we might have moved a couple. And so what it's built now is based on trying to alleviate those compression issues now. Um, and like I said, if, if we raise that, that minimum wage, we just have to kind of bring it up. At least the, I would say probably the last four or five pay grades are going to have to be jumped. Um, and so that does, that does, that does increase the bottom line pretty significantly.
That's less than a hundred dollars a person as far as pay rate. Uh, I mean, uh, I know that our structure, pay structure now is, is not the greatest there is. But as you get into the workforce, next year, the minimum wage may be different, but that person that started at the minimum wage should already be another step up. And that's where we failed.
Yeah, and, and, and at the end of the day, when we go back and start recalculating, even the, just looking at and taking out the compression issues, just the folks that we have at twelve seventy, moving to a fifteen, you're looking at roughly, because that's almost thirteen, you're looking at roughly six thousand dollars per employee to do that. And there is a significant number of our employees at that bottom end because that's our laborer position, our office assistant one positions, um, custodian positions. So there, there is a number of folks there at six thousand dollars an annual, well, that's salary cost, then you got to add in TMRS. So, so you're looking seventy-five hundred, eight thousand per individual employee to do that, and then the compression on top of that. and then the compression on top of that. So off the top of my head, I would say you're going to at least add at least a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars to the bottom line. And that's very rough estimates to try to implement fifteen right off the bat.
I wouldn't have realized that many people are at that lower pay scale.
Yeah, we did, and that was why we were very intent on trying to get a minimum wage for the city because that was, you know, at least more comparable with what, because we were losing people at those positions. It's a rotating door with the laborer positions because we were not paying, you know, what the market was. And so those positions are seeing a rather large increase, yes. We are working towards it, and I think that's something that if you want to continue to build to a minimum wage, we can definitely look at increasing that. Mario and I have actually talked about that, you know, over time, that that may be something that we would want to help, you know, build into the budget, give y'all some options on how we can address that from the bottom up.
Okay, thank you.
So, are you okay with option one? And then look at moving up?
And look at, yeah, moving that.
And you're comfortable with that?
Right.
Because I think we can do that, Mayor, and Councilmember Bolden, is, you know, as Pam mentioned, doing that five-year plan outlook. We can do that. I mean, that's the way to do it, is to, if we could start with this base plan, and then let's look at those options and scenarios of how would you implement an increased amount for those labor-type positions, those field employees? Because there is going to be that cascading up effect, but, I mean, we can build some scenarios so you can see the overall impact and see how, if that's a priority as a group of council, then, you know, we'll build that as part of the budget, but certainly let's at least look at those options over the coming months.
I think we're looking into.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
So, option one is good with you? And Amelia, option one is good with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Option one is good, and I'm for option one also. So is there anything else you need?
Can you pull up that?
Yeah. Which one do you want pulled up?
Keep going. So yes, if option one's what y'all are leaning to, you know, the next thing that we would do is Pam's going to run these numbers and then also bring to y'all the budget amendment at the fifteenth. And if approved, it will become into effect and implemented at twelve-twenty-six, so the end of this year with the pay date of one fifteen into next year. And then also, we would start talking to staff now, you know, really showing them what this is going to look like, what it's going to be, how it's going to be carried out, what are the plans going forward, and also start working on those policies and procedures that we talked about to making sure that when this is implemented, we hit the ground running and we get everything taken care of. So we have a solid plan moving forward.
Is there anything else you need from us?
I think we are good.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Thanks for all your hard work. I know this has taken a long time, and we appreciate it very much. Okay, so we now are going to go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074. It is six forty-four P.M. on December first, two thousand and twenty. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074, it is still December first, two thousand and twenty. It is seven oh eight P.M., and council is returning from executive session. And we are going to take action. I'm going to make a motion that we cease negotiations with our city attorney finalist and authorize Mario Conasars to enter into an agreement with SGR Search Firm for a city attorney.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any, no opposed, okay. That concludes our meeting for December first, two thousand and twenty. Thank you all for attending.
Well, it was my pleasure to attend.
Yes, bye.